Can you guys hear me? Are we ready, are we ready to go? Okay, perfect. Hey guys, welcome to our Tuesday, January 26, 2020, Planning Commission Work Session Meeting. I'd like to note that, I think... Where's Wanda? Is Wanda here?
I don't see her.
Have you heard from her at all?
No.
So, all the commissioners are present with the exception of Wanda? Nate? Um, or she wa- it's Nye, right? Okay. Um... Let's see, let's, how about presentation and reports, Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. Trying to think what I reviewed with the mayor today. Harbor Freight Tools is moving forward pretty aggressively. They have a timeline, they want to be turnkey to the... I say they, the contractors want to be turnkey to the business owners within eight weeks, and it's already been two weeks, so that's the timetable they're working on. Five Below continues to move forward in the old Pier One building. The Zeppe's location continues forward, thinking it's probably plus or minus four weeks till they're going to be open, able to open in their space, and they'll move forward there. Then we have the items tonight on the agenda, as well as the Riverdale Landing Phase Two project was approved by the City Council. There are some items that they still need to check off of their list, but that's the Cafe Rio and the Mobeta site. And then Raising Canes was approved by City Council as well, and moving through its process. So, those will be going through a kind of pre-construction process with all the performance security and the plat and all the phone recording stuff. So, there's things going on there. As far as other things on the horizon, the City Council has been talking about a date to do a... I don't know if the Planning Commission will be invited or not. Shaylee, do you know, to that Planning, strategic planning meeting? Or is that just speak? Okay. But you may still want us Planning Commissioners to be aware of what's being discussed about, because I think there is going to be some, some brief discussion of land use as part of that discussion from the City Council's perspective. So, take note of that. Other than that, I think that that's everything for the purposes of this meeting, unless you have any other questions for me, and go from there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Consent items, I don't know if anybody looked over our meeting minutes and work session minutes from January, it would be January 12th. Everybody good?
Just one correction. I'm listed as Kevin Anderson. Should be Kent.
And it will be fixed to say January 12th, too.
Chair, Chair Spires, I just didn't know, we are missing another Planning Commissioner?
Uh oh, who did I miss?
It's, uh... Why can't I think of his name? Who is it?
Rick Herman?
Yeah, Rick.
Rick Herman, yeah.
Yeah, Rick's not here. I started doing some counting, and I saw five of you, so yeah, Rick's currently not present. Between this meeting and the next meeting, if you'll give me a minute, I'll call him and try to get him on for the main meeting.
Okay, alright. Because he didn't, he wasn't able to make it last time either. Okay, action items. Number one, consideration of preliminary subdivision plat and site plan approval of Riverdale Center... Uh, is that a six? Subdivision property located approximately 4163 to 4177 South Riverdale Road, Riverdale, Utah 84405, as requested by Anderson, Wayland and Associates and Riverdale Center North LLC. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you. This is the first of two items that are closely linked. Your second item on your agenda is directly linked into this item, so a lot of the comments on this item will have application to what we discuss in the next one. That being said, Riverdale Center North LLC is the owner of the property that's requesting the subdivision. I'm entitled, as you noted, Riverdale Center Six subdivision. It's a three lot subdivision development project with some site plan portions of it which include new private drive access aisles, utility connections and supporting facilities for the real estate, as you noted in the beginning. The zoning for this property is retail commercial park overlay zone, or RCP. When you say an overlay, that means the underlying zone that has application would be C3, even though it's kind of quietly outlined as such within the development agreement and the RCP zoning in our city code. That's the underlying, the underlying zoning that applies to that. For the zoning, there is a development agreement that was noticed, noted as the Riverdale Center Two Development Agreement, and it was approved back, I believe, in 1999. Although the agreement itself has expired, the terms and the conditions of the agreement relative to the development of the area are still in place because of that RCP overlay zone application, if that makes sense. So, there's certain standards, architectural standards, landscape standards, parking standards, et cetera, that are directly still applicable in place even though the agreement itself has expired. So, I need to make clear on that, because sometimes when we deal with RCP, it's like, "Well, that's kind of weird." But that, that's by extension what the RCP does. It almost memorializes that development agreement as far as standards included. And it has its own unique standards that I'll bring into play where appropriate as part of the discussion. The property, as you know, is an existing retail center where historically there's been a Best Buy building and some smaller commercial spaces next to it that are in the current process of demolition. And then obviously to the west of this is the Lowe's, the Lowe's Home Improvement Building and its site. The... Let's see here. The request of a, of a restaurant or a commercial pad use on these three lots is, is an approved permitted use within this area, and there are other conditional uses that could be imposed depending on how the other lots are used. We do know one of the lots is going to go for a requested use of a cafe drive-through type of a use, and that again is the second item. Let's see. You have all the, the comments for the preliminary views put in your packet. Do you know that it's, for the purposes of this meeting, with a preliminary view, you are the approving entity? You're acting in a legislative role as far as decision makers in that you're giving vested rights to the project? By, by, if you do make your preliminary approval this evening, you're creating vested rights for the project. And that, that's not to say that obviously we can't, we will still go through the remaining process at some point, they'll come back to the Planning Commission for recommendations, City Council, go to City Council. But you are decision makers for the preliminary portion of this tonight. In the packet, you'll see the signage and the lighting referenced in there. If you have any questions about any of that, clearly that's, that's applicable for tonight's discussion. The general plan use for the area is listed as planned commercial high. The proposed project does comply with this land use. Going back to the RCP, as I reviewed the development agreement and the code, some of the, the more heightened standards are tied to parking, berm, screening, the landscaping and the parking and around the parking, how it connects to the street as far as pedestrian access. Those sorts of things, as well as the architectural standards that are established in the development agreement. So, I'll try to guide, you as Planning Commissioners, of anything I know. I didn't really know a whole lot that was a concern. Clearly with this first project, I'm kind of, I'm kind of sliding into the second one, but this first project, there's not as much in play. Second project, there will be some items to note. So, with that, absent going through all of the items listed on my review, you'll see the, the planning review, following the planning review in your packet. If you have any other questions about that, in the interim, let me know. You'll see the, the staff report from Public Works, Fire and Police. Following that, you'll see the City Engineers' report comments, review comments about the plat and some of the items on the plat and the site plan. And then you'll see the application, followed by the, a geotech report, and then the applicable plat and drawings for that subdivision. So, with that, absent any other things that I, I noted this time, I'll, I'll share in the main meeting, I'll defer back to you as Planning Commissioners, if you have any questions for me about this first proposal, go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Anybody have any questions?
I do. If I, if I understand this right, we're just identifying the subdivision piece itself for this first part. The second part is going to be specifically what's applied within that, that piece?
Within one parcel of the three lot subdivision, yes.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, and the three lot subdivision is a site plan in that they are going to be adding utility mains, if you want to call them that, to service the three lots. They are going to be installing water lines, gas lines and some other main utility lines, and they're adding new, new more, I guess you'd say more established private drive aisles internally to connect to the three lots for future development on the other two lots that aren't, aren't subject to review at this time.
Okay, because that's, that was one of my concerns as I looked at this, was the private drives and how those are going to impact the other tenants.
The other tenants will have to be plug and play with this design that's being submitted if this gets finalized and approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's move on to action item number two. Consideration of preliminary site plan approval for Dutch Brothers Coffee property located approximately 4177 South Riverdale Road, Riverdale, Utah 84405, as requested by Dutch Brothers LLC. And I don't want to butcher that name, Barghassan Engineers?
Barkhausen. Barkhausen.
Okay, Mike, I'll let you take it from here.
Great. Yes, the applicants are, are basically Barkhassan Engineers and Dutch Brothers LLC. They're represented, at least in my dealings, it was Savannah Hutchins with Barkhassan and Russ... I don't know if it's Orsi or Orsi, but he's on the call with us as you can see, so I'm sure he can comment if I, I say his name wrong. I'm not sure who's representing Barkhassan's interest this evening, but we do have a couple of faces that I'm not as familiar with, so. I do not recognize Nick Wecker, I've talked to him, so he may be part of that group. Anyway, this is again a preliminary site plan approval review. You are acting in a legislative decision-making position to create vesting rights for this project. This is for a new cafe building with drive-through and supporting facilities, as you noted, at 4177 South Riverdale Road on the old Best Buy building site. Again, this is in, in the retail commercial park overlay zone, and this development is subject to the previously approved development agreement for Riverdale Center Two, back, approved in 1999. The current ownership is Riverdale Center North LLC. As we've talked about, there's no public hearing requirement for this project request. The site plan that you have in your packet shows signage, color renderings, et cetera. I noted that in error in the last one, but obviously with, with the three lot subdivision, there's no buildings, but with this one, there is. So, those are in the packet for this project this evening. The general plan use is planned commercial high. This project does comply with that land use. And again, as, as just noted in our last discussion, this is basically a plug and play site on, I believe it's Lot Three of the three lot subdivision that AWA Engineering has, has brought forward on behalf of Riverdale North, or Riverdale... Is that right, Riverdale North? Anyway, Riverdale North LLC, I think that's, Riverdale Center North LLC, thank you, there it is. Following my review, you'll see, or following the executive summary, you'll see my review comments, and I'll go over those. Again, you'll see the staff comments in the form of the Public Works Department comments and the police and fire. And then following that, you'll see the City Engineer comments, which I'll review in more detail during the main meeting. And then the application from, from Dutch Brothers' side, as well as project narrative. This project narrative is very helpful in understanding some quick, brief components of the project and some of their initial research and working with me to identify things of, of discussion. Or I guess clarification on what their project's about, and then you'll see their drawings following that. And then following that, you'll see their rendering. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, when Shaylee was trying to put the packet together, it wanted to opt to put the renderings in black and white, but you should have had in your packet an attachment of the color renderings of that. Card definitely gives it a lot more flavor and, and appeal than it does in black and white and really sells the story of the brand for them. So, be sure you do look at that as, as part of your review this evening. There is one thing that I do need to bring up from the, oh, and then the last page has the lighting, site lighting for it. The one thing I do need to bring up for the development agreement that I just picked upon, or not the development agreement, actually it's the city code I picked upon, and this is more guidance and, and direction for Barkhassan as well as AWA. As I was reviewing the RCP ordinance, I looked at 10-13B-7 in parking, and it's more just kind of a, hey, if this isn't happening, be sure that this does happen. It's, it's kind of a unique code I haven't seen elsewhere in other codes. It talks about, it says, "Design of the parking area shall attempt to minimize the large uninterrupted hard surface areas with landscaping islands. Landscaping shall integrate the parking areas to the building, providing few quarters, pedestrian pathways." And then moving on, there's a line that says landscaping of parking areas must be 5% of the land inside the perimeter of the parking area. I'm sure that's not very hard to hit, but just make sure in the, the design of it, I guess in my direction, this is my direction for Barkhassan and AWA teams, make sure any future projects or the, the current Dutch Brothers, we meet that 5% of the land inside the perimeter of the parking area being landscaped. There is also multiple instances of landscaping berm evidence, both in the RCP zone as well as the development agreement, as well as in the, the broad landscaping zone. A lot of developers get caught up on what that berm is. It just needs to be gradual berm that does screen cars. This one is specifically of concern to me because the cars that will be queuing in two lines will be facing Riverdale Road. So, we need to really make sure that the landscaping plant has good berming and good screening of the vehicles as they're queued up and, and their lights are, are hiking towards the east and then as they wrap around the building, that is a concern. So, but it is backed by the code in RCP zone as well as the development agreement. So, and then it's referenced in my report. But anyway, those are a few things that are a little bit outside of the report that are, are very much in play. I just want to make sure that they're, they're discussed now, so it's not a surprise to, to either Barkhassan or AWA, like, hey, we didn't know this was an issue. So, with that, I will defer to the Planning Commission, if you have any other questions for me or, or the applicants who are joining us for this work session, and then obviously we can discuss in more detail during the main meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Does anybody have any questions? Comments or concerns?
I'm assuming that it's already been addressed by the police and other agencies, but my concern was that most of this exit traffic from them is probably going to move south in front of subway, and then you've got that tight turn to get onto Riverdale Road. Is that, does that meet code enough to be able to, will that interfere with subway's operation?
It's, it's fine. I don't know what their cross-access use arrangements are. I'm sure that that's been vetted. You know, you do see that there's already cross-access use for utilities, so I have a feeling that there's already been a relationship matched up for subway with the previous Best Buy use. From a police and a, a City Engineering perspective relative to traffic use, there was no concerns brought up with that. I don't know that it will be of a significant of, of concern relative to any other types of movements we have in the city. I think if they were concerned, it would have been brought up, but neither the engineer nor the police department brought it up as a concern. But again, you do have something I didn't provide in the packet because it's really just a lot of legalese. There's about eight or nine title agreements between the, the center property owners all around it and how they interact with each other in the form of these shared, shared use easements and, and rights of way and that sort of thing that are in play here and impact what's going on here. If you do want to look at those, clearly I can provide those to you. But in our review as staff, they seem to vet and, and meet that cross-access use both from a traffic as well as utility perspective. So, I, what I kind of hear you talking about is, is there a traffic concern, number one? And number two, is there the appropriate cross-use accesses that are available as far as subway back and forth? And the answer seems to be yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Okay, let's move on to 3A. Discussion regarding proposed rezone request for properties located at approximately 1526, 1528, 1560 and 1580 West Ritter Drive, Riverdale, Utah. Mr. Eggit?
Okay, great. So, this is a, we're getting used to these rezones lately. We've had quite a few in a row, so this is good practice. This rezone request is, is for the properties listed from 1526 to 1580. As part of our processes, you're, you're aware of that. More recently, we set the public hearing after we receive a request for rezone. That's what the, the point is, or the, the purposes of this agenda item this evening is calendaring that rezone request. The scheduled date that seems to make the most logical sense would be February 9 for that calendaring, if, if everything looks in order as far as the packet's concerned. Again, remember, this isn't a discussion about the application or the merits of the request. It's just, does everything look in order? Does it look like a complete application, scheduled for the February 9th date? And from staff's perspective, it does. What you have in your packet is a full and complete application, and fees have been paid. So, from staff's perspective, all the right boxes look checked. And, and we, we are equipped to go ahead and advertise if you want to move forward in supporting calendaring said dates. So, with that, that's really all there is to say at this point. I would defer to the Planning Commissioners, if you have any other questions for me or the applicants are online, you'll see Josh and Brittany Gates have joined us as well if you have any questions for them at this point. So, with that, I'll defer to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. So, any comments, questions, suggestions? Okay. Any discretionary items? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't need a motion.
What was that?
Don't need a motion.
Okay, okay, you're right. Well, we have five minutes, so... I'm trying to get a hold of Wanda. We'll see everybody back in five minutes?
Yeah, and I'll reach out to Rick, see if I can't get him to join us as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Rick will be joining us shortly. He apologizes, he had to visit at his house and lost track of time.
Okay. No worries.
Hi, this is Savannah Hutchins. I was just wondering, can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Savannah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Are we ready to get going?
Although I don't know if Rick's joined us yet, but that's probably still okay to move forward if you want to.
Okay. I don't see Kent back yet.
Yeah, that's true. I need at least him back. There he is.
There he is. Okay, well, for time's sake, we'll just, everybody good to start going? Okay. Welcome to everybody to our Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Um, uh, city planning commission meeting. Um, I want to note that all commissioners are present with the exception of Wanda and I and Rick Herman. And Rick may be joining us later. Do we have any public comment?
No one is here and then I haven't received any emails and nothing on you do.
Okay. Anybody that's on this, on the call or with us that has any comments or what, any comments or questions they'd like to address? Okay. We'll move on to presentation reports from Mr. Aggett.
Thank you. I'll be brief since you already heard the, the mainspill in the work session. Um, just noted Harbor Freight Tools is trying to move aggressively and get into their site. They're, they're trying to get done about six to eight weeks. Um, Zeppe's is trying to, we think, be done in about four weeks or so. Be able to open their spot. Five Below continues in its space moving forward in the old, um, uh, Pier One Imports. And, uh, the Riverdale Landing Phase Two project continues forward and checking its boxes and getting things it needs to be done before it can record the plat. And Reason Keynes is kind of in second position relative to what, uh, Riverdale Landing Phase Two team does there. Um, and yeah, we have the other items on the agenda this evening. And then the final thing I noted was the city council will be having a strategic, I guess you'd say, planning or, or discussion meeting at the first, their first meeting in February. So I would advise you to watch that in the event that we do talk about some planning concepts that may or may not have implications to the general plan or land use, uh, decision making within Riverdale City as a result of those discussions. And with that, I'll defer to planning commission, if you have any other questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aggett. Any questions, concerns, comments? Okay, we'll move to action item. Um, D consent items, I'm sorry. Consent items, consideration meeting minutes from January, and it will say twelfth, twenty twenty-one, our work session and regular session.
I'd like to make a motion. Will you approve the meeting minutes?
I'll second.
Do you want to note the changes that were brought up in the work session as part of those, that approval?
Yes, sir. Um, we had, uh, Kent's name incorrectly. Just leave the date on there to say January twelfth and, um, I think we're good. On today's, uh, Shaylee, on today's, um, initial paper, it says Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. But I don't know if that even, if that part matters.
I forget that I muted. Sorry, I'm all talking. On the agenda or on the packet part?
On the agenda, I'm sorry.
No, that's, it's mine.
Okay, perfect. Do you want to approve these minutes with those, those corrections?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes with the noted corrections.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, really finally, action items. Number one, consideration of preliminary subdivision plat, plat and site approval of Riverdale Center Six subdivision property located approximately forty-one sixty-three to forty-one seventy-seven South Riverdale Road, Riverdale, Utah, eight four four zero five, as requested by Anderson, Wayland and Associates, Inc. and Riverdale City Center North LLC. And I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Aggett.
Thank you. And it looks like joining us Jake Tate has joined us, so he is available representing AWA and Riverdale Center North's interest in this project. And there may be others on this call who are also able to represent, um, that team's interest. That being said, as you noted, it's a three lot subdivision development project that includes private access drive aisles, utilities and supporting facilities. So there is a, a site plan component to this approval this evening. And they submitted both this, a subdivision application as well as a site plan application and paid fees for said reviews. Um, as noted in the work session, this is in a retail commercial park overlay zone, and I've talked about that, how it's tied to a development agreement that was approved back in nineteen ninety-nine uh, with the city. And there's some, uh, restrictions, or if you want to call them, I guess, not even restrictions, but standards or uh, accepted practices for architecture, landscape, parking, um, signage, lighting, all that fun stuff as part of that development agreement and also as noted in the actual RCP zone itself. Again, I've talked a lot about some of those ideas, so I won't go into a whole lot more detail at this point. Now, there's no public hearing, uh, component required for this meeting, uh, discussion, and with it being a preliminary site plan and plat review, obviously is noted. You're making a legislative decision as planning commission to basically vest the project and, and give it some limited legal rights for vestiture. With that, given that we talked pretty length about the executive summary, I'm going to go ahead and move beyond the executive summary that's in your packet and, and available to the public in the packet online, um, and start reviewing the comments from staff. Um, start with my review comments first. Um, as I, as you'll see in the packet, uh, there's some addressing updates that need to be made. AWA engineering team took an attempt at, at doing some addressing, but I've gone back and followed our standards of addressing and applied correct addressing to lots one, two, and three to meet our, our standard and meet the Weaver County standard. So it's a little bit more accurate with the alignment of other addressing up and down Riverdale Road in that location. So that's noted in your packet. Lot three should be forty-one seventy-seven, lot two forty-one sixty-three, lot one forty-one seventy-one. Um, you'll note that a couple of times. So really, I'm just going to review it one time and then the other times it's just on my checklist. So um, moving on to the next item for this project. Uh, it's under landscaping and percentage. This comes back to my comment before within the RCP, why I, I kind of uh, it became a concern to me when it brought up that very explicit statement about five percent of the, um, parking area be landscaping inside of the perimeter of the parking area. That is a requirement that would be included to my statement here in your packet. My statement in your packet says percentage of landscaping provided for site is unclear at this time. Unknown if proposed landscaping meets requirement twenty percent or more landscaping coverage per city code ten fourteen twelve B two, which is the broad landscaping code outside of the, um, ten thirteen B landscaping statements. Um, the reason I say that, there's two areas, as you know, in lot one and lot two that are just, it just say, it says something about native vegeta-, not native vegetation. It says something about temporary vegetation being placed there. That's great. I just need some percentage calculation telling me how much of what is part of the three lot subdivision itself is landscaped, so I know that it's meeting the standards. And clearly that will change as lot one and two get developed. I mean, now have site plan reviews. They're going to have their own independent landscaping analysis. But for the purposes of this project where we are doing a site plan, I just need to make sure that that twenty percent is clear or exceeded, which I'm sure it will be. So that, that's what I'm looking for there. Um, under a landscaping plan showing all planning, et cetera, it says planning, hardscaping shown temporary protection fences need to be installed around temporary landscaping filled areas. And then gentle burning locations as required, not identified landscaping plan where applicable. And I say that because it may not be applicable to what AWA is doing here, but definitely they should be aware so that as they work with future clients for lot one. Uh, and if necessary, you can use a lot two, that, that burming is, is something that is, is established for landscaping. Uh, and then irrigation plan not identified. Um, as you noted with the temporary landscaping where they are going to have, and this I think goes back to what was brought up by Commissioner Anderson. You know, these two lots that are open with these driveways that come through there. They're just going to be open fields at least for said time for however long, whether it's six months or a year or whatever. Well, you know, what, what's going to keep people from driving through those areas and, and ripping up even the temporary landscaping? The best option clearly is some kind of temporary fencing, right? You want to kind of insulate those, those lots. So uh, you'll see a note as well, I think, from public works department, but, uh, we need to make sure we know what the temporary landscaping will look like around those areas just to keep you know, vehicle drivers out of those areas, that sort of thing. The bottom line maybe that those two lots get developed pretty quick. I know from conversations we've had with the, with Jake, that the, um, lot one likely will be going through development posture pretty quickly here in the near future, and you'll see that. But, uh, just want to make sure we understand that. And again, I note that under new existing walls and fences, temporary fencing plant or site should be identified, material unknown. Under new existing streets on right of a lines, just that the term, actual term right of a needs to be identified on some of the drawings, making it clear whether you don't right of a exists relative to the site. Um, on your stop signs, there's some internal stop signs to the project that look to be maybe relocated or, or other stop signs. Just be good to have those identified so we know how the traffic circulation is going to work and where those internal stop signs will be relative to the new drives. Under calculations for retention system, I put no calculations for existing retention system used provided. Um, they do reference that they're going to link to the existing large detention basin, detention slash retention basin, which is in the far northwest corner of the existing project by Lowe's. Um, but there's no calculations that show whether there's adequate volume there to accommodate new flow or if what the impervious surfaces look like on these sites as they develop, that sort of thing. And this kind of bleeds into what Barthausen is doing with, with Dutch Brothers on the second item as well. And obviously they're going to have more true impervious service with what they're designing because they're actually developing on lot three with this three lot subdivision and site plan request from AWA. Um, gutter inlet box was bicycle safe grade. There are some gutter inlet boxes, um, noted on the drawings for this subdivision, but the detail of those inlet boxes and a note of bicycle safe grade aren't shown. Um, so we would do need those details shown and then thrust blocking, if there are any thrust blocks, the locations and details need to be identified. And then finally, water rights transfer documentation. Uh, the applicants need to work with public works department, provide adequate water rights for the site per eight dash six S three of city code. Um, obviously they're going to have some impervious new drive aisles that they'll be responsible for. They be in Riverdale, uh, Center North LLC. And so that needs to be discussed with Mr. Douglas to make sure the adequate water rights are available for the development. Uh, moving down to department staff reports, uh, you'll see under stormwater, uh, items one through eleven. Um, if there's anything in particular you feel like you need to, to have addressed there, please let me know. These comments have been provided to Jake Tate and AWA Engineering. Um, so, uh, if there's any concerns there, uh, I would advise AWA to contact Mr. Douglas to work through these items. Or if, if, uh, AWA or Riverdale Center North has any concerns that they discuss those at least at this meeting, get on the record and then I take those comments back to Mr. Douglas. That way I don't have to go through items one through eleven and read every single item, although there are quite a few there. Under water, uh, there are some notes, water meters need to be installed in a park strip or crew location. Existing water surfaces lines are not useful, need to be capped in the main line. Fire line location and size, backflow preventer location. Um, peak demands for water, provide water shares, new main line required two valves per connection for isolation. Uh, and I did fail to note, going back to stormwater for Mr. Douglas, there is a kind of recurring theme with him and that he's questioning how the stormwater will be captured as well. He clearly wants more detailed understanding of the structure size. Um, how the, the, um, again, if there'll be adequate capacity in the existing basin and that sort of thing and what those systems will look like. So that's definitely something that will need to get fleshed out more conclusively going forward with this project. Under sewer, abandoned sewer lines will need to be capped at the crop to your main line. And then other, just some notes that will need to be shown on the drawings and square footage of impervious surface for each lot will need to be identified. Pleasing and fire, uh, under police, no concerns from the fire, or police chief. The fire chief didn't comment, but the fire marshal did, and he said he has no additional recommendations. Typically, we see the fire chief lining up with the fire marshal in his comments. So that's a pretty good sign on the fire side of things. Moving down to the city engineer review. Um, he does say the plat boundary closes the standards of Riverdale City. The note existing easements entry number blank will need to be added to the plat. Please get your microphone and join us. Thank you. Um, geotechnical report need to address and evaluate soil percolation valves and subdivision. Uh, talks about stormwater requirements managing eighty-five percent of the stormwater prior to discharge to site detention basin, and that needs to be met per each lot or combination for the subdivision. Stormwater calculations need to be prepared and submitted. Um, again, uh, a, a better understanding of the overall site stormwater collection system and piping layout. And then he says on drawing C one dot one site plan, the area data table at top of the drawing, the percentages will need to be completed. Improvement drawings for lot number three have been submitted for review. How will lot number two and lot number three be finished prior to new commercial uses? This needs to be shown. I'm not quite sure what Mr. Nelson is looking for there. I would advise the applicants to contact Mr. Nelson and discuss that comment, more detail what he's looking for there. And then on drawing C three point one utility plan, drawing note is referring to the culinary water piping system will need to be updated reflect to Riverdale City standards. And then he notes those standards and then all inlet stormwater boxes to be hooded boxes. So following his comments, you'll see the, the, um, application and all the applicable subdivision drawings as well as the geotechnical report that was submitted. And with that, I know it's a lot of information, but at the preliminary, I give you a lot of information because there's a lot to discuss. With that, I defer to the planning commission, if you have any questions for me and/or Jake, who, who is here available to answer questions, uh, as you may have them for him. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Aggett. Do we have any comments or concerns anybody would like to address?
I would move that we approve the prelimi- preliminary subdivision and site plan for Riverdale Center Six, Riverdale Center North LLC. Um, lots one, two, and three, forty-one seventy-seven, forty-one seventy-one, forty-one sixty-three, South Riverdale Road. Pending, sorry, pending the, uh, corrections noted in the subsequent reviews that are attached.
And can Mr. Anderson, at this point, you don't need the pending because it's not going to city council? They'll work through those. So you could just, if you feel comfortable with the project direction, you could do that. It's, it's your call. But, but you could do that at this point.
Question that I would have is if we, do we need to have them address those? Those items that you've noted?
They, they would need to work on those before we bring it back to the planning commission anyway. That's the typical procedure. Um, yeah, it takes quite a bit for them to come back to the planning commission for a second review. So you're asking for something that we typically do anyway, but, but if you want to word that, you
But that's, that's later.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then as, as presented, I would approve, as mentioned and identified approval of the, uh, the plan.
Second.
All in favor? Shaylee, do you want to pull the commissioners, please?
This is, this is matter. So a roll call would be great. Thank you.
Aye. Aye.
Is Commissioner Herman here?
Yeah.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
Commissioner Irvinville?
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And we'll work with the, the next applicant to make sure all those comments are coordinated and meshed between the plans as we move forward. So thank you.
You're welcome. That would be great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to action item number two. Consideration of prelimi- prelim- preliminary site plan approval for Dutch Brothers Coffee property located approximately forty-one seventy-seven South Riverdale Road, Riverdale, Utah, eight four four zero five, as requested by Dutch Brothers. as requested by Dutch Brothers LLC. And I don't want to slaughter this again.
Barghousen.
Barghousen Engineers. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. Yeah, as you noted, Barghousen is the applicant on behalf of Dutch Brothers LLC. I've been working with Savannah Hutchins on this project, and Russ Orsia Orsi is the signatory on behalf of Dutch Brothers interest for this requested project. It is a preliminary site plan review. You are the decision-making body for the purposes of this request. This is for a new cafe building with drive-through and supporting facility services located, as you noted, at forty-one seventy-seven South Riverdale Road, which is on the south end of the old Best Buy building site. Again, we're on the RCP overlay zone, the retail commercial park overlay for the zoning, and it is subject to the development agreement that was approved for the site, Riverdale Center two back in nineteen ninety-nine. A public hearing is not required to be considered for the site plan proposal, and the property is owned by Riverdale Center North LLC. Scrolling through the, again, the executive summary, applicable signage and lighting plants have been provided in your packet. And if you have any questions about those, you can feel free to discuss that at this time or save it for a later discussion and a later review of this project. General plan use for this area is satisfied commercial high. This proposed project does comply with the land use. And this type of request for the site plan is a typical site plan request we would see in a C-three zone, which again, is the base underlying, or I guess you'd say, applicable zoning that would be part of this RCP overlay zone for the purposes of a retail commercial development. So this is a completely good fit from that perspective of zone code. With that, I'll move down to the planning review, my review first, and then move on to the other reviews. Under the, on the first page, under the cover sheet, project name and address, again, the address location needs to be updated to reflect the corrected address of forty-one seventy-seven South Riverdale Road. The approving agency's name, which is Riverdale City, and our address need to be shown on the cover sheet somewhere for future submittals. On the vicinity map, the site location is an error, it's from the wrong location for the project site, and that needs to be located on the west side of Riverdale Road, a little to the south from its current shown site on the vicinity map. So that needs to be updated. Moving down to page four in your packet. Under new building height, I don't know what the height is at this time, but in reviewing the the summary that was provided by Barghousen earlier today, I did find the actual building size. It's eight-hundred-and-sixty-two square foot building pad. So take that into account, that has been updated, I do have that number. The type of construction, there will be a DRC, a design review committee, review needed for this site plan. Barghousen is very aware of this. I've talked to Savannah a time or two about this as well as, I think, Nick Wecker in the past, so that is something that they should be aware of at this point. Landscaping codes identified on sheet L one point zero are not referencing Riverdale City codes. Looks like it's some code from another jurisdiction. It couldn't make sense, so you might, when I say you, the Barghousen team, you might want to make sure the codes you're referencing in your documents are Riverdale City codes and not some other municipalities. Does require gentle burming locations, as I've noted, both in the general broad landscaping code ten dash fourteen dash twelve B two, as well, again, in ten dash thirteen B dash seven B, which is in the RCP zone. And when it says landscaping berm, rolled landscaping berm, it just needs to be able to screen and buffer vehicle lights and movement, most specifically in this case, the two drive-through queue aisles as they move east around the building and then kind of work north, that's going to put a lot of light into Riverdale Road. And we need to make sure we don't impact those motors driving along Riverdale Road. So again, general berms and screening would be applicable uses there to meet those code requirements. That is also found in the development agreement, just as kind of a site note. And moving on to new existing parking. It appears per code adequate parking for use concept. It does meet the standard for the development agreement. The development agreement requires there to be four and a half stalls per every one thousand square feet of building space. Clearly, this is more than enough, they're going to provide nine stalls. I put nineteen because in a way that there's other stalls around the site that will still be a place that will be available as well. So for their site, they've indicated nine in their summary, but it looks like it could be up to nineteen, the way that they're drawing shows the site currently. That being said, the city code for C-three, or excuse me, for parking standards for cafe is tied to eating booths and tables and stools. So for me to get a real accurate count, it would be good to have an idea, even approximate, of how many eating booth tables and stools will be anticipated, just to make sure that. I'm matching up clearly with Title X, Chapter fifteen of our parking standards, and then we can clearly check that box. Again, stop signs, location of any stop signs on the site aren't clearly shown. It'd just be good to know what the circulation of the site will look like as far as how motors will come in, filter around, and where some stop signs will be and that sort of thing as far as the movement on the site. It helps us to make sure there's going to be no challenges. As per direction from Commissioner Anderson earlier, we want to make sure that vehicles flow correctly on the site, and there's no challenges that are unforeseen from a planning or even a police and public safety movement. So we want to make sure we understand how vehicles will move on the site. Under location, size, and types of water meter valves, water meter size, location type not identified, location of new valves not shown or applicable. You'll see a similar comment from the city engineer on his review. Gutter inlet box, the bicycle safe grade. We just need to make sure the gutter inlet box details somewhere say bicycle safe grade. So it's clear that that will be something that we know is there, especially where this could have bicycle traffic, where they'll have a walk-up window on the east side of the building. Thrust blocking, location detail not shown if applicable. And then again, water rights transfer documentation will need to be provided per city code eight-six-three for the site and working with the public works director. And again, that may be more AWA that will assist in doing that on behalf of Dutch Brothers, but we need to make sure that the adequate water, the adequate water shares are available for this development of this project. Moving into the public works director's comments. Again, some of the same comments about the storm drain system need to be addressed. Some of the typical things we see about BMPs with the Drain System Operation Maintenance Plan being recorded with the plat. And he says provide proposed flows, GPM over GPD. Hydraulic separator BMPs retreat stormwater for water enters underground retention detention or city system. Know some intent filed with state if you can do any underground water systems in the future, or even you might need to check on it for the existing retention detention structure to make sure you meet state standards that way. And then stormwater prevention plan for construction, client cleaning BMPs including your restroom. All stormwater inspections will need to be completed until plants go. Injection well permit if required, again, that's for an underground detention structure. Underwater, he says water meters need to be installed in the park strip or approved location. Meter box design is approved L C standards. Existing water surface lines that are not in use will need to be capped at the main line. Backflow preventer location type size, provide water usage peak demands, provide water shares will be used. Under sewer, abandoned sewer lines need to be capped at property line. Under other, the same notes, and then he did add a new one here, dimension and square footage of each lot, and then again, square footage of impervious service for each lot, that's for stormwater. No comments from our police department of concern. Our fire chief did respond on this one, said he didn't have any issues, and our fire marshal said he has no additional recommendations. Moving on to our city engineer. Under improvement drawings, geotech report will need to address and evaluate soil percolation valves on the site and other lots within Riverdale Center four subdivision. Note at various places on drawing reference, girl's square footage, which is different than the partial square footage by nearly thirty-five hundred square feet, needs to be resolved and explained. Existing large sewer laterals must be disconnected. What surface and underground improvements will be installed to the north of the Dutch Brothers site, lot two, lot one, and by whom? Service pavement depths will need to be placed in drawings rather than referenced to the geotech report. Again, the eighty-five percent volume of stormwater per state of Utah stormwater requirements for the overall site will need to be shown and met. Stormwater calculations for Dutch Brothers site will need to be prepared, submitted. Overall site stormwater collection system and piping layout extends from the three lots and the proposed subdivision to the existing overall detention, okay, we talked about that. This is a new one specific to the site. There's presently a stormwater junction box on the subway sandwich property with discharge piping onto the Dutch Brothers lot. This goes back to that cross to use stuff I was talking about earlier. The discharge point piping inlet box is at the most southeastward curb and gutter location on the subway sandwich property. Not quite sure what he's looking for there, but that make sure that that's discussed with our city engineer. He's concerned there. On the site, there are several locations where stormwater will be directed to flow across asphalt to a curb wall and then along the face of those curb walls. Is our recommendation that curb walls be replaced with curb and gutter due to the climate here in Utah with freeze thaw conditions. So that is a unique comment to this review that should be noted. Storm drain from north side of Dutch Brothers site will flow onto lot one and lot two of the Riverdale Center six subdivision. A maintenance management final need to be created to resolve this issue. Normally, all stormwater falling upon an approved lot remains on that lot and is managed by that lot owner. And again, there's some that will clear itself up probably as other site plan developments occur, but for the purposes of currently, you know, what's the temporary plan? And he says also reference review item number two above. Item seven, the peak runoff on the site will approach two CFS. With this volume of stormwater, we recommend that minimum pipe diameter for stormwater pipe be at least ten inches in diameter, encourage a twelve-inch diameter pipe. All inlet stormwater box need to be hooded boxes. Under culinary water, he says, how will the site be serviced with culinary water? Please show details. Item two, where will the culinary water meter box facilities be located on site? Please show construction detail. Item three, where is the fire line and the details in regard to the building fire line? Item four, an existing fire hydrant has been called to remain in place. We could not locate it on the site drawings. I did find it, it's not on the Dutch Brothers site, it's just located outside of it, but it is located still in close enough proximity. It's kind of on lot one, very most extreme southeast corners. That's why maybe our city engineer missed it. But maybe it'd be good for Barghousen team to just clarify its location, even though it's outside of the lot three pad. Item five, there's no irrigation water supply in Riverdale City. Yet the plan's called to connect to the irrigation water source. Culinary waters to serve the landscape needs to the site, and there must be reserve pressure dual check back preventer installed, which I'll learn in drawings. With the detailed drawing, please show connection details. Finally, I know it's a lot of things, but finally, under sanitary sewer, sizing calculation for the required capacity, the grease interceptor will need to be shown on the drawing along with the drawing detail. And item two, a sanitary sewer sampling panel will need to be shown in the drawing along with the drawing detail. So those are all his comments. You'll see following that, the application for the site plan, the project narrative summary, and then thereafter, the project drawings, and then the building elevations, drawings and colorations, which, again, the color renderings were provided in your packet. So with that, I know it's a lot of information, but hopefully, this addresses the large items, and we can move forward with fewer and fewer items as this project moves forward. And with that, I defer to planning commissioners for any questions you have of me or the applicant team at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Do we have any, anybody that has any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the preliminary site plan for Dutch Brothers Coffee located approximately forty-one seventy-seven South Riverdale Road, Riverdale, Utah, as requested by Dutch Brothers LLC and Barghousen Engineers.
I second it. All in favor?
Let's do a roll call vote again.
Okay. Sorry, I was going to do both, I don't need to. Shaylee, will you poll a commissioner, please?
Commissioner Spires?
Aye.
Commissioner DeMar?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
Commissioner Weepel?
Aye.
And Commissioner Jones?
One is here too.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Knight?
Aye, sorry.
Okay. Motion passes. Action item number three, A. This is a discussion regarding proposed rezone request for properties located at approximately fifteen-twenty-six, fifteen-twenty-eight, fifteen-sixty, and fifteen-eighty West Ritter Drive in Riverdale.
Do you want me to go ahead and take over just quickly?
Would you, yeah, that would be great, please.
So yeah, rezone request application by Brittany Yates in working with the Poulsen family. She submitted this for, as you noted, address ranges from fifteen-twenty-six to fifteen-eighty West Ritter Drive. It is a request from existing agricultural LIT zone properties along Ritter Drive to R dash one dash six, which are six thousand square foot minimum lot sizes. It'll be on five-point-six-seven acres of property that they're requesting. And again, for the purposes of today's meeting, and solely just to make sure the application looks good, two weeks from today, and looking at the calendar, would be February second. And so at this point, it would just be, see if you're comfortable with scheduling a public hearing for that, and then staff would move forward in getting everything advertised, et cetera. I know the Yates have joined us on the call, if you have any questions for them as part of the application, submittal, or the calendaring. They're here, and otherwise defer to planning commission for any questions or comments you may have, and take action thereafter, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Does anybody have any questions or concerns regarding the rezone request? Comments?
I move that we schedule a public hearing for the rezone request from A-one and LT, or LIT zoning, to single-family zoning residential R-one dash six for the area located approximately fifteen-twenty-six, fifteen-twenty-eight, fifteen-sixty, and fifteen-eighty West Ritter Drive in Riverdale, Utah, to be scheduled for our next meeting, which would be, what would be the date?
February ninth.
February ninth.
Second.
Shaylee, will you poll the commissioner, please?
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Weepel?
Aye.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
Commissioner DeMar?
Aye.
Commissioner Spires?
Aye.
Commissioner Knight?
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any discretionary items, anyone?
I do have one item, real quick. I do have two of you up for basically, how do I say this? Renewal of your position, we have a position opening for your positions. The mayor will be reaching out to you, I've let him know who that is. So he should be reaching out to see if you're interested in potentially serving for another four-year term. So if you get a call from him, it's just your turn this year. And I'll remind him to reach out to you so you're aware. We'll try to get that done as soon as possible. Your term technically will expire the end of the month, but as we've done in times past, you'll probably just continue to serve in a capacity until such time. Either your term is renewed, or someone else is requested to fill that position in the future. So just want to give a heads up to two of you there to watch for that, okay?
Perfect, perfect. All right, guys. Thank you, Mike, thank you, Shaylee, for always keeping us together.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Have a good evening, guys.
Thanks, everyone, thanks for showing up, and have a good night.